Statement. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Hattie Berry Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board and showing the time and place of meeting. Please rise for the pleasure.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, authorizing a convenium of executive session to discuss matters of personnel anticipated pending litigation and matters of real estate. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Can we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will be back as soon as we're finished with conducting our business in executive session. We just need to do a few things before we can come back out.
Ready?
Yeah.
Recording.
Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public law of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Hattie Berry Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of meeting. Please rise. So, the flag of multiple silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda, resolution 2023-113, authorizing a temporary capital budget.
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, providing for a temporary capital budget in accordance with NJIC 5:30-4.4B. We're trying to get a jump on some of our capital, such as the police cars and some of our road paving projects, so that we're not waiting until midsummer. With the police cars, if we can get them in earlier, we may be able to get them here faster, because I'm still waiting for last year's. Can I have a motion to authorize temporary capital?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First read of ordinance 2023-07, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment.
In order to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating $2,634,830, therefore, and authorizing, excuse me, the issuance of $2,185,000 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof authorized in and by the township of Lacey and the county of Board of State of New Jersey. So those items that we're looking to get a jump on would be road and drainage improvements to Northwest Barnegat Pines Phase 3. We do have a $334,000 grant that we received from DOT towards that. We're also looking to include road improvements to Stephanie Court, police department items such as new computers in the cars for the police department, body worn cameras for the police department, as well as the new ALCO test, and then the traffic light upgrades to Lake Barnegat Drive and Haynes Street. That equipment alone, by the time I award the bid, takes about 20 weeks at a minimum to get in for the traffic signals and all of that. So we need to definitely try to get a jump on that. So can I have a motion on first reading of the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First read of ordinance 2023-06, authorizing sale of block 101.12, lot 104.
In order to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, authorizing the sale of block 101.12, lot 104 on the municipal tax map to Anthony and Lori Jean Sacallo in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B and NJSA 48:12-13.2. This is a non-conforming, one of the old fire easements that was offered to the adjoining property owners. The one property owner is interested in purchasing it from the township. There are no drainage pipes in it or any need for future drainage pipes in the amount of $17,500. Second reading, open the floor to public comments for this?
Public comment, any comment on this?
Where is that?
For Good River Beach area.
Okay, oh, Melvin Park.
Anybody else in the public?
Seeing none.
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2023-
Can I get a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Motion on the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-114, supporting the acquisition of block 4108, lot 18.01 by the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust Fund. This is a 1.745 acre vacant piece of land west of the Parkway. The County of Ocean has acquired for their open lands trust all the adjoining property to this. This is the last piece to acquire.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-115, authorizing the interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean.
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, authorizing the execution of interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for the fiscal year 23 Ocean County Sheriff's Traffic Enforcement Grant Program. Again, this is where the sheriff's office assists us and we assist them on various items under the Sheriff's Traffic Enforcement Grant. They reimburse us $70 an hour.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-116, authorizing the execution of amendment to the contract for the Northeast Barnegat Pines Project.
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract with Swift &amp; Sons Incorporated for the Northeast Barnegat Pines Road Improvement Project. This is the final quantities change order. We are closing out this project. It was an increase of $71,548.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-117, awarding a contract for the CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, awarding a contract to Stanley Construction and Roofing Company Incorporated under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program. This is a house on Greenwood Lane that meets the qualifications under the low income guidelines to have some housing rehabilitation worked on through the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $15,650.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-119, authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution to township Lacey County, Board of State New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $7,663,386.71.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Monthly reports.
And abstain on D0400.
She knows me better. She knows me well. Keeps me out of trouble.
Trying to. Tough job.
Monthly. Max of all.
Impossible job, actually.
Monthly reports.
What was that, Mr. Dykoff?
I didn't say anything.
He didn't say anything.
I think it was Amy.
Monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of $11,240.30. Municipal Court for the month of January collected receipts in the amount of $15,192.82. Road opening permits for the month of February came in in the amount of $5,265. Recycling commodity in the amount of $892.60. Municipal docs in the amount of $4,400 for the month of February. And Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $55,689 for the month of February. Motion to accept the reports is read?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes from February 23, 2023.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve above-
Budget.
Motion to approve budget meeting minutes from March 2, 2023.
Move it.
One of you guys has a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes from February 23, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve above-
Budget.
Motion to approve budget meeting minutes from March 2, 2023.
Move it.
One of you guys has a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the raffle licenses for the BPO, ACLS 2518, Soprano Mist International, LBI, and Alyssa's Avengers.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have two add-ons, if you don't mind. Okay, first is resolution 120. It's a resolution of township Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Phil DiAmore as the part-time electrical subcode official for the township of Lacey. He is currently our subcode inspector. We have lost our subcode official, so I am, we are appointing him as the subcode official part-time. That's all we need. Can I have a motion to appoint him?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Next is resolution 2023-121. It's a resolution of township Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the provisional appointment of Lori Koneski as construction code official for the township of Lacey pending open competitive procedures by the Civil Service Commission. Our current construction code official slash electrical subcode official has resigned and has taken a job with another municipality. By law, we are required to have a construction code official. We have gone out, solicited resumes, did some interviews, and we are appointing this young lady to the position. She will also be doing our plumbing subcode. She is a master plumber gentleman. She's got quite the credentials.
Yes, she does.
She'll be starting with us on May, March 27. She will be filling in for our plumbing as needed basis, because our plumbing subcode official is leaving us, and the salary is $105,000 a year.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on this evening.
Now, I'm answering the committee. Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we completed our budget. We completed it early this year, and I just want to thank our CFO and Veronica and all the department heads for all the hard work they've done on it. It's, you know, it's difficult every year. It gets harder every year, because we have to make difficult choices about what to fund and what not to fund. And they're all, a lot of the asks aren't, you know, they're all needed, but it's a very, you know, just have a difficult time picking and choosing what we, you know, what we should do and shouldn't do. But I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work, including the committee as well. And I do sit on the planning board, and just to update, it is probably the slowest we started out in some time. You could tell that the interest rates are really putting, taking a bite out of the economy. Very little activity at the planning board right now, and you can really tell that the real estate market locally is slowing down, also just from the high interest rates. So hopefully, towards the end of the year, it'll get better. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Committeewoman Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to say congratulations to our new hire there at Community Development. That's a wonderful addition. Met her, interviewed her. It was a fabulous interview. Anyway, and the other thing I'd like to say is, this job that we have up here is, it's a hard job, not in the fact that we work hard, it's more about having to make decisions, as Committeeman Kennis was saying. And I'm appreciative of the fact that I'm here a year now, and everyone above here has helped me and walked me through it and has given me advice and helped me make decisions that, you know, it's not easy to make. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for this past year. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think I speak for the committee. Mrs. Juliana, that you have, you had a very difficult time to come in, concerned with your husband, but you have really, truly stepped up to the plate and hit a home run.
I appreciate it. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Committeeman Dykoff.
I just want to echo what Committeeman, Deputy Mayor Kennis said. We had our budget meetings, and I know other municipalities, having familiarity with them. Some of them don't pass their budgets until September. And I know Veronica is already always on top of it, as is our CFO, always on top of us to make sure we, you know, give her the information or give her, you know, our thoughts. And again, thank you very much for all you do, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committeeman Curatolo?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I just want to echo some of the sentiments of Committeewoman Juliana. We did along, we conducted those interviews that she had referenced along with Veronica. And, you know, there were some credentialed people, and to have a master plumber here and have the experience on the private side as well as government, that always makes for a better government person when we have some private side experience. Two days ago, at about 8:30 in the morning in Tom's River, I attended the Ocean County Mayor's Association meeting. There was a person there representing New Jersey League of Municipalities and talked in great depth to the mayors and the different folks that were there as committeemen and deputy mayors, council members, et cetera. Talked about Governor Murphy's budget, $55 billion budget for our 21 counties. And what I could tell you is that they touched on everything from school cuts to the ease for which it is recommended to get liquor licenses, there'll be more particulars. About the only good news in the room that I heard for townships like ours was that there's hope that it could change a little bit, because these are just proposals and it wasn't released yet. But you just have to stop taxing and spending, and you have to make fertile ground for our businesses to flourish, because they are the economic drivers in our community. And until the state realizes it, it's unfortunate, but we're going to continue to lose population. Committeeman Kennis had told me something a long time ago, and I'll close my comments with this, and it's pretty sad, because we love our state and we certainly love Lacey Township. Fortunately, Ocean County continues to get population, but we can't offset the aggregate of the other 20 counties losing population, running to Florida and the Carolinas. But he said something that stayed with me, and I listen when he talks about land use, because he's, as we all know, very smart and learned it. And he said, Pete, unfortunately, a lot of the things that keep people here in New Jersey are family. And that's unfortunate, because we love it here and we want to stay here, and we want it to be affordable here. And that starts at the top with our governor and works its way down. Grateful for the ninth district, legislative district, grateful for my colleagues to the left and right of me and our employees. We're trying to hold it down here in our township, focusing on what we can control. I think we do a good job. Mayor, Mr. Dykoff, Committeewoman Juliana, Committeeman Kennis, Ms. McGuckin, everybody deserves to be named, because they do the heavy work, and of course, administrative the right. Thank you for all you do. That's my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Couple of things here. Just want to congratulate two of our police officers. Lieutenant Robert Flynn and Sergeant Samuel DeSala have graduated from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Command and Leadership. And he just, this just sounds like it's a great deal. Is it, what it was, is a highly competitive 14-week program that combines theory and application according to the website, and it works in conjunction with West Point. So it's a very difficult thing to do, and I'd like to congratulate our police officers on that. Let me talk a little bit about the education cuts that Lacey is facing. It is absurd. We continue to get cut after cut after cut. And about two weeks ago, maybe two, not two weeks ago, a week ago, I was watching, I was working out CNBC, and they brought him on. They brought Governor Murphy on, Joe Kernan interviewed him. And he said that, you know, I'm a red-blooded capitalist. Well, I have a problem with that. When you have a $10 billion reserve and you're making school cuts, I get, to school districts, and then just not Lacy, this throughout the state, that have continually to get cut after cut after cut, it affects the education of our students. There's no question about that. And for him to go on there and say that, it's an embarrassment for New Jersey. And I'm also going to say this about the NJEA. I went on their websites, just to see what they had to say about this. Now, this is, I get it, they're for the teachers, no problem. But this is what the leadership said, and it really bothers me. Governor Murphy has once again demonstrated his commitment to New Jersey student families and public schools with a budget that prioritizes the needs by investing in our state's future, by fully meeting the state's annual pension obligation. This budget also serves respect to the educators who have made our schools the best in the nation. I have no problem meeting pension obligations. You got an obligation, you meet that obligation. But to sit there and cut budgets, education budgets, it is flat-out wrong, and I'm furious about it. I heard a number last night that I almost fell off my chair. It's in the double digits, the number of teachers that are going to lose their jobs in Lacey Township. It's wrong. It's wrong. The quality of education in Lacey Township with those cuts, and it's not the school board's fault. It's, they only have so much money to work with. It's wrong, and the quality of education will go down. And I'm calling on all the residents in Lacey Township, teaching, I don't care what you are, I'm going to read a couple of phone numbers out. Call them. This is the phone number to the governor's office. Let's light up those switchboards. Let's make them where they can't do any work. They're going to have to address this. The governor's office, 609-292-6000. The Department of Education, 609-376-3500. And the NJE office up in Tom's River, 732-349-3037. Call them. Light them up. Don't stop. Call them every day. Enough is enough is enough. Think about this. Every school district around here, Pine Lands, Stafford, Barnegat, Central Regional, all got increases. Why is Lacey getting none? Why? He has to answer to these questions. Don't tell me he's for education. Can't be. And don't tell me the NEA and New Jersey Education Association is for education, when I get, they got to fight for their members. No problem with that, and that's what they should do. But they're not saying a word about the cuts to the count to other school districts. Why not? They're going to lose jobs. Isn't the union for jobs? They're not, they're going to lose jobs. It's wrong, and you cannot justify this in any way, shape, or form. And you're here to hear first, if President Biden decides not to run in 2024, you can bet your bottom dollar that Governor Murphy's going to throw his hat in, and if not, it'll be 2028 for sure. There's no question about that. And just think what that man will do to this country.
I'm out.
That's all I have.
Let me open this up to the public.
If the public have any comment here this evening? Sheen, now motion to close the floor. Second.
No, I'll go.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'll be, it'll be my pleasure.
Okay.
Just your name for the record.
Okay. I'm Kristen, resident of Lacey Township. This is my first meeting.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Um, can I hear it? Okay, I'm short.
Okay.
So I just want to say, I voted for each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Okay. I was a big supporter, and I actually loved hearing your comments, because I never really met you guys personally. I think at a fair once at Gilly Park. But I love hearing you guys talk about how wonderful Lacey is, what keeps families here, you know, is, you know, their families, and, you know, what matters a lot, too, is representatives and people like you who listen to us. You know, if we vote you in, you know, like Mr. McDonald, I emailed you a few times, and I never got a message back. I was, I'm with the-
Whoa.
Yeah. I'm with the-
After, when this meeting's over, can you please give me your email address, and we'll check that? I apologize, because I've-
Yeah, I emailed you a few times.
I've responded to all emails.
So I just have a few concerns about the turbines that are going to be put in.
Go ahead.
Okay? And I know my, one of my friends spoke last meeting. She got an email back.
Right.
Okay. I do have a letter from the NOAA and saying how it disrupts their eating habits and how the sonar actually, it's how it connects with them and their behaviors, it drives them off track. We've never seen these animals wash up on shore every day, almost every day. And I'm sorry, but if that keeps happening, that's going to drive people away from our shores. So many people come here to go to the Jersey Shore. Then they're going to be wind turbines. I mean, talking about budget cuts and all this stuff for our schools, what about our shores? The money that we're going to be putting towards these wind turbines that aren't even going to cover all of New Jersey resident homes? What, I think, what, a few hundred of them cover 500,000 homes?
Something like that.
Okay. Well, there's over 3 million residents in New Jersey. And I'm, yeah.
More than that. That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Or more than that. So what I'm going to look outside to when I go to the beach is I'm going to see all these wind turbines and dead animals.
Well, okay, let me, first of all, it's down in Atlantic City. It's off Atlantic City, where they're putting the turbines, okay?
And Oyster Creek.
No. No, no, that's not Oyster Creek, no, no, no.
No, that's misunderstanding completely.
I know what you're talking about, this is gonna be, hear me, I'll get to Oyster Creek in a second. They're 15 miles off the coast of Atlantic City. 15 miles, okay? If you go on a clear day, it might be a thumbnail that you're looking at. That's basically it, okay? They're 15 miles. Now, what you're talking about is where they're gonna run, where they're gonna tie in to the, to the, to the grid. They gotta come up through Lacey and go across nine and tie into the grid. That's a benefit to Lacey. Orsted, we've had meetings with Orsted about this, and they wanna be good corporate citizens of Lacey Township. So they're working, we're working with them on this, okay? So that's what you're talking about, but there's no, no turbines going in anywhere in the bay at all, which remember, Lacey doesn't have any oceanfront property. It's all bayfront. So you're not gonna see, if you go down to the beaches on the bay, you're not gonna see them. You're not gonna see them. It's seaside, I don't know, maybe LBI at the tail end of it, what's the bottom of it? You'll see it, you'll see it, you'll see it. But that's it, okay? From Lacey Township, you're not gonna see them. But they are gonna come across, it's the only place they can tie into the grid, okay? And keep this in mind, we lost the power plant, and they haven't replaced that energy. The New Jer, state of New Jersey hasn't replaced that energy. Now, would I like to see something better? Yeah, I would, personally. But this is what they're offering? And they're coming into, to, to Lacey as good corporate citizens? We're gonna, we're gonna work with it.
Even with everything that's been going on?
Okay, so let me address that issue.
Because, I mean, I, I'm not saying stop it altogether, but just let an investigation happen.
Well, that's what they're doing. They're doing that now. And if you've read the papers, that last one that, that rolled up on the beach, I think it was two days ago or something like that, if you look at it, what they said, it's gonna take about six, seven months to get the results back, okay? And here's the other problem with this. I've read a lot about whales, okay? Sometimes too much. But the problem, when a whale dies, it decomposes very quickly, okay? And the ears go first. So the, so the trauma to the ears, which is what you're talking about, they cannot, they cannot determine, I have read a lot, and there's no definitive says that the whales are dying because of this, okay? Because of that. It's just not out there, all right? Now, what is killing the whales, and they, NOAA has said this time and time again, it is the strikes in the boats, recreational or the vessels in the shipping lanes, because they're out in, they're out in the sea, entanglement in fishing gear, and entanglement in plastic. And that's what's.
I get, I get that, but the numbers have rose dramatically since this substations have been put in place.
Well, if you go look, go look at 2017, prior to, prior to, uh, when we lost, uh, I think it's 90 whales, something like that, it was a very high number in 2017. Prior, at that, at that time, Mr. Kenneth and I attended a meeting about Orsted, they hadn't even put anything in the war yet, when we lost a lot of whales, so.
But now there, there are things in the water. And it, and these deaths are starting to happen right after that.
Well, okay, now let's talk about Ocean City, New Jersey. They started in November, went to the middle of February, okay? 24/7, seven days a week on a beach replenishment. Now, beach replenishment, they gotta go out and find where the sand is. How do they do that? Through sonic. So they were seven days a week for what, two and a half months, something like that? Okay? That could be part of it. Any beach replenishment, the only way they find the sand is using the sonic to do that. So what do we say? We gonna stop all the beach replenishment? You wanna talk about killing, you wanna kill, talk about killing New Jersey's tourism? Don't have beaches, you know? Let's be realistic about this.
I think we lived long enough without them.
What, without beaches?
No, no, without, without the wind turbines, I think we've just been just fine.
Well, when Oyster Creek went offline, it, um, it provided power to 650,000 accounts. They have to replace that somehow. While we don't get our, while we have a nuclear power plant in our town or hat, we don't directly get our power from Oyster Creek, it kinda sounds funny, but we don't. It goes through the market. So they need to replace at least that 650,000 rep, the customers that they lost by Oyster Creek going offline, besides the influx of building that's going on in New Jersey and what is called the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland electric grid.
Okay.
So that's part of the reason why, and again, Governor Murphy has the green energy that he's looking to do and to do these other mechanisms of energy, which would be obviously the wind turbines and other issues that he's looking to do.
And he's made great decisions over the past few years, hasn't he?
I mean, he wants, you know, we're not supposed to have gas, we're not gonna have gas stoves anymore, gas cars.
I just, I'm sorry, like, I, I really, I'm not, I can't be on board with this.
Well, look, you're.
And this, this is, it's very, very concerning that, you know, you know, especially like I reached out, I feel like more people should even be here and be outraged over this, like no one's here.
Well, would you please send me that letter, that article?
I have it right on my phone, you know what, I'll send, I'll send you a fifth email with that attached to it.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. But before, before you leave tonight, give Veronica your email, we'll check it to make sure it got here, didn't get put in the spam. I apologize, I don't, I don't do that. I, I try to get back to you within 48 hours.
Okay. Yeah, I know you're a busy man, I didn't expect it overnight, but I emailed you.
What's your last name?
Neil, N-E-O.
And that's how your email's addressed?
It's not, that's not how my email is addressed.
Okay, all right, so after, I don't want to go wrong.
That's fine, I'll let someone else speak.
Okay, does anybody else, any other comments? Okay, well, let this man, let this gentleman then, thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Just your name, Jim.
His name, Jim.
No address.
Not where you live on.
Okay, here we go. Jim, Jim, Lacey Township.
Or you could do Jim, I know your last name, so.
Uh, just a few things I wanna go over quick. I know it has nothing to do with the committee, it's actually Ocean County Parks. Uh, the rail trap crossing on Lake Shore Drive South by Applebee's driveway that way, uh, for like two weeks now, the, the button, it beeps, but the lights don't flash, which gives people the impression that you have a green light, and you're, because people are, you know, I even ask them, because I stop, whether I see the lights flashing or not, and I say, why don't you just press the button? They say it's not working.
All right, thank you.
And it's been like that for two weeks, I've called them twice.
Who'd you call, Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
I'm gonna call Engineering and Road Department.
We'll get that taken care of.
Yeah, and today, I checked it today, it's still not working.
Okay, we'll get that taken care of.
Uh, second issue is Walmart and ShopRite used to have the boxes, uh, you know, when we got rid of the bags, the plastic bags? When I was a kid in Aron, they got rid of the bags decades ago because they were covering their fields and streams and everything else. Now they don't even, kids born 25 years ago don't even know what they are, the bags, they've never seen them. So, um, but I did notice that ShopRite and Walmart stopped putting the boxes that you could get rid of the plastic bags in, and these type of bags are still the produce bags, which people are using reusable bags. Why you need to put the fruit in a bag? And then, but, I don't know, you're gonna wash it when you go home anyway.
I think it's for, for weighing them, because that's how they pay for it. Don't quote me, don't quote me on that, but when I go shopping with my wife, she puts the grains in the way and so forth.
It says recycle right on it, I thought that was a recycled bag. That's what I was gonna just say, because this one is, I think it's from Walmart, says, um, please, you know, please recycle and bring to a participating store or whatever.
Right, so he's saying that it's not there to do that anymore.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's something that somebody should kinda maybe.
We'll get, we'll get a message out.
You know, is, they, they share their responsibility, because they make these, and then they don't, and these, and when they get into storm drains and oceans, these look like eels. And not eels, they look like jellyfish. Animals ingest them and they start, they die slowly and, you know, they start. Now, the third thing is, of course, the whales.
Okay.
I watched the last meeting on YouTube, it's kinda frustrating to watch. I, I, I give you all of the kudos for actually using the NOAA report and for having patience, because, and you, sir, for talking about the grid that needs to be, you know, cobwebs brushed off it and get, get it to work. Now, after the Deepwater Horizon exploded in the Gulf in 20, 2010, I went to a Bureau of Ocean Energy Management meeting in Atlantic City, where they were discussing oil companies' sonic cannons that were going to be blasting for oil off the Jersey coast. I actually got booed here, because I was saying, what happens if oil washes up on our shore and dead whales? And everybody booed me. And now it's because the wind farms, everybody has jumped on this thing. A, a lot of people, I don't know if they get their science from Facebook, I always took science as a kid. I have a college degree in science, it's, it's something, I don't watch baseball, I watch Nova and PBS, that's the kinda shows that I like to watch.
Good for you.
All right? Now, what I was gonna bring up was that, at that meeting, um, there, there was scientists who said that, yes, this, this is as loud as a 747 taking off in your backyard every three minutes, but that's what the oil companies are using, those sonic cannons, because they have to go a mile down.
Right.
And penetrate the surface beyond that. These wind farms are only a few miles off the shore, that wa, that water is not that deep. Not only that, but unlike the oil companies, they don't zigzag across the ocean endlessly with these sonic cannons. Now, at the meeting I, I was at, they had, um, a big fellow stepped up to the microphone, and he had medals all over his chest, he was the first mate of Jacques Cousteau, whoever you, the older generations might know, he was a famous captain in ocean explorer. He explained that he was 100 feet down scuba diving with, with Cousteau, when one of those ships passed overhead with the sound cannons. He said it was, it was like the worst migraine he ever had in his life, and he said it was like taking a big gulppy slurpee, frozen slurpee, and down and getting the worst case of brain freeze you could imagine, in your sinuses, which you can imagine what that does with sonar. But with these wind platforms, they're not using anything close to that level of decibels. And they're only using it in a small radius, a small area, and then once they map those platforms, they're gone. It's not like the oil companies who are endlessly out there zigzagging with these cannons everywhere. Now, the other thing you have to take into account is, when the pandemic started in 2020, cargo ships around the world sat in ports for almost a year. There's, the oceans, actually the oceans got cleaner, wildlife returned, everything else, right? Pandemic came to an end, all those cargo ships, thousands of them, are now crisscrossing the ocean.
Right.
Right? Now NOAA has buoys, whale sense, that sense whale song, they put them in the shipping lanes to alert captains of these ships that there's whales in front of you to, to reduce speed, but to reduce speed for a cargo ship cuts into profit. You can't get that Tupperware set to do work by Wednesday, we're losing money. So what happened was, only about 60% of captains, cargo ship captains, and maybe even cruise ship captains in the Atlantic are reducing speed, when they get the alerts, less than 30% in the Pacific are. Now, most of these whales, when they get hit, they sink to the bottom. Some, you know, some may get to shore, most of them, like the whale that we saw in Seaside Park last week, had blunt force trauma to its head, it had massive lacerations to its back, it was the propeller, wasn't sound that did that. And what, what's going on right now is that, like I said, it's, 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 it's a kind of a thing where, you know, it's, it's misinformation. It's like, you know, where was everybody worried about the oil companies? So we're not that far, 12 miles out, it's the Wild West out there. And not only that, but they have fishermen from other, not, not this, I'm not saying this country, but other countries who are out there, who leave drift lines, drift nets that are almost a mile long out there. They abandon them, and they're angered, which is worse. And that catches everything in it. All sorts of marine life die slowly in those nets. A lot of these whales that are washing up, they have scars from those nets and stuff like that. So it's, it's just a matter of, of, you know, of, of, what do you call, um, looking at measurement and cause and effect, right? So I mean, that's pretty much what it is. Like, you know, people don't like change, they don't like things new. Look how many people moaned and cried when seatbelts was a law, right? Then they started going through windows, like, like tests, crash dummies, and then they, people got serious about it. But we, we do need to get away from, you know, from oil and everything else. The Deepwater Horizon gushed 210,000 gallons of oil per day for three months into the Gulf. And what these oil companies do, like BP, because they get charged for the amount of oil on the surface, they get fined for that, they bury it with a chemical called Correxic that sinks that oil to the bottom. And this way, there's less oil on the top, they're gonna pay less. And it's all, and, and you know, and that's what it's about. So I'm, I'm for looking towards the future, not towards the past. We're still using dinosaurs to power our cars, we gotta, we gotta up the game a little, you know, so. But anyways, I, I watched that meeting, I was like, pull my hair out, you know, because the NOAA report says, it says these are very low impact on, on, you know, so, like I said, and that's my piece.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else, this young lady here?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for saying.
Just state your, your first name only, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Donna. This is my first time, I'm here also, welcome. I've met some of you at the Republican Committee meeting, so thank you for that. I'm the co-founder of a group called Patriots for American Freedoms in Ocean County. So we're doing our best to help get everything that seems out of whack back in order again. For our families in our town, in our community and county, and of course, the United States. I have a couple of things on my mind. One is, Mayor, I totally agreed with everything you've said about Murphy, so I'm totally on board with that.
Well, thank you.
I think we all are. But I do have a question, and I was wondering why you didn't participate in signing the moratorium with the 30 other mayors against.
No, 13. I think it's 12 or 13.
Oh, whatever, 12 or 13, whatever. I was just curious to know why you didn't, you didn't, you weren't on board with that. I, I know about, you explain the windmills, and I understand that, in fact, I'm just learning about the windmills myself. I'm doing my own research on it. You know, there is a company that, you know, is, has gotten the contract for that with two other companies. I don't remember the names offhand, but anyway, I just feel as though there's a lot more to this than meets the eye. And we've all gone through circumstances where something was approved and it didn't turn out to be the way we wanted it to end up. And it turned out to be a lot worse than what it was. I've been at a lot of the school board meetings, and things there sounded good, but then, when things came to reality, it was a disaster. So these are the things, like, this is the concern I have with this windmill project, because even though it's offshore and whatever, there's still blasting going on to insert the windmill posts into the ocean. So those blasts kill the mammals also. There's a lot more to it than just being off the shore and not on our beaches and whatever. But what happens if we're on the beach and a dead whale shows up? I mean, really, what would happen? Because they are showing up all over the place.
Right.
You know, they are. So I was just curious why you didn't go along with the other mayors against this windmill project.
Okay, let me, let me explain. First of all, I don't have the authority to do that. Let me explain, let me explain why. We're a township committee, I have one vote. We didn't vote on it, okay? So I had to postpone it. And what I said at the last meeting, we would take it under advisement, which is exactly what we did. At this point in time, we feel, and we were gonna put out a letter, okay, to that effect, that we feel that following the science, the scientists, NOAA, and so forth like that is the best way to protect the whales. If you look at what NOAA is suggesting, slower speeds for the boats, okay? Fishermen, more regulations for them as to what they're doing with their nets and so forth, and getting the garbage out of the ocean. These are just three of the things that they're talking about, okay? And they have, they're trying to, the last thing I read, they wanna get that out and get, make it, make it a law, so that there's some teeth into this. And if you look at what they're saying, going back years, it's always the boats, the big boats and the fishermen. Now, this gentleman, Jim, made a statement about the New York port and New Jersey. It is now the second biggest, busiest port in the, in the country, excuse me, okay? And they are flying. Go down, go down to the seaside and you can see them. I mean, they start there and five minutes later, they're down there. They are flying, okay? They gotta slow it down. That's part of the reason why, okay? If the science changes, we will readdress that issue. But we think for Lacey Township, because we have to deal with Orsted, okay? And Orsted has indicated they wanna be a good corporate citizen to help Lacey Township, which is what we are up here to do. We have to do what's best for Lacey Township. That's what our obligation, that's what we're elected to do, do what's best for Lacey Township. Now, I don't even know if all my township committee members agree with the windmills, I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about what's good for Lacey Township. And, and getting Orsted in here and doing their thing, I'm okay with that.
I don't know if you've ever heard of Agenda 21, the UN Agenda 21.
No, never heard of it, but I will look it up.
Yes, and Agenda 2030, the UN Agenda 2030. The UN is not our friend. And the reason I'm saying this is because a woman, uh, many, many years ago, wrote a book, The Green Mask, and back then, she said that this was gonna happen, that windmills would be the next step to the agenda. You have to read all about it, we don't have time to go into it. But it's been part of the plan all along to build these windmills and to get them in. Same thing with, um, some of these developments now where the stores are underneath and the apartments are on top, trying to hone us all in into an area over the years to come. So check that out. But my last comment is about smart meters. And, um, I was very disturbed to hear that 13 counties in New Jersey are getting smart meters. And we're one of them. And smart meters produce a lot of EMF radiation. And Canada has gone through this, um, for a couple of years now, and it produced massive disease, illness, and death. And I was just curious, I don't, I don't know if you've researched this, I have.
You're, you're the first person that's mentioned.
I'm bringing it up because.
Can you give us a quick, a quick overview of what a smart meter is?
A smart meter is a meter that's attached to your house.
Oh, okay.
And to your electrical, so that the, people don't have to come and read your meters anymore.
Oh, okay.
So it's linked directly to the electrical companies. And they make it sound all great and dandy, just like we thought these phones were so great and dandy and we're finding out all the radiation coming out of these phones and causing illnesses. Well, Canada's been going through it for two years now, and they're in an uproar. So in New Jersey, I read that there's no opt-out, but somebody told me there is. And you can opt-out of getting a smart meter, um, but you have to pay $15 extra a month. Again, no big deal, $15, not a big deal. But in Canada, after one year, they, they upped the charge to $1,000 a month and people didn't have heat or electricity. So I'm, I'm wondering why the 13 counties that they chose, which I don't know all of them, I just know Ocean County's one of them, is it because we're a red area?
Have you addressed the county commissioners with this?
I was just gonna say that.
Pardon me?
Have you addressed the county commissioners?
No, and I, that's what I, was gonna be my question, to get it out there, to let everybody know that this is not a good thing coming.
Well, I, my, my suggestion to you is, Wednesdays at 4:30, 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock, yes, 3 o'clock.
Wednesdays at 3 o'clock, they hold their, they hold their meeting. I would go up there and address that to them. You know, they make the decisions for the cap.
I'm just gonna end it with, you know it must emit a lot of radiation when Amazon smells, sells smart meter covers and a backing be, behind the smart meter into your house so that the radiation cannot come into your house and cause illnesses. So I'll end with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Sheen, now motion to close the floor.
I know, every time I come up here, hello, everybody, good to see you all again, everybody's healthy, good, smiling, great, hi Peggy.
For the record, please.
Um, I'm sorry, Melody Pryor, Forkett River. Um, I know every time I come up here, I discuss Newark Ave, this thing isn't working. I discuss Newark Avenue with you guys. Um, I don't know if there's been any changes to get some, I was literally driving this gentleman, um, but I was driving, so I couldn't film it, and this person obviously didn't know the street, and he was literally red, telling times that person on the school off the road, he had a tree, and it's bad. So we already have existing spots, we don't have to put up new poles, we don't have to do anything. I will, I will buy the new reflective tape for you guys, I don't care. Seriously, send me the bill, Veronica, I'll pay for it. So can we please do something to protect somebody, because it's very dark at night, Google's map sends everybody down there, Lyft sends everybody down there, somebody's gonna die. And when somebody dies, we're gonna say, man, Pryor was right. I don't wanna be kicking myself in the butt for not being here.
We'll take a look at him.
All right. Another thing, uh, you know, there's a lot of people concerned about Lake Side Drive South, and I have free copies for you guys, we can share amongst each other, just whenever, if you don't have to do it, whenever, it doesn't matter, just so you're aware. And the whales, regarding the whales, just for people who wanna do a little more research, if you go to Scandinavian countries in, in this world, yes.
Okay, let me explain something here, this is, we just checked with Veronica, she knows the town better than anybody.
Yeah.
This is a county road, again.
And it's on their, it's on their. It's, it's in their improvement plan to pave it, but they had to wait until the gas company is finished, and it is part.
It looks like summer, that was really my question on there.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, it's in their plan to pave it, I believe the bids are going out in, within the next couple of weeks, um, that, and they're also doing something, they're also paving Lacy Road.
Right.
So, we've got a lot of money by our county being invested right back into our community.
And the county's also doing the street sweeping now, that they're using.
No, 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 only on their roads, on their roads, and we do it on our roads, yes. We're required, it's the county, this is the state, and, you know, the local municipalities are required by law to do a certain amount of street sweeping every year, and it has to be reported back to the state under, are the stormwater management regulations. So, everybody does their part in making sure that their roadways that they control are swept.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one last thing about the whales and the turbines, and if you are, all right, whale, people aren't gonna like what I'm gonna say. Whales, when they beach themselves, it happens all over the world, all different times, it could happen in Patagonia, which I don't know if you know where that is, if you're not given geography, it's all the way at the southern tip of South America. We would never hear about whales beaching in Patagonia here in the United States, because we don't even get world news here, all right? It happens everywhere, it goes around. Here, we have the jet stream, all right? We have all kinds of crazy things going on. Now, if you go look at Scandinavian countries, they've had it thirty, forty, so many years. Yeah, they got the Baltic Sea, it's cold, I get all that, but they're, they're, nothing was beaching up when, since they've had wind turbines there. So, that's all I gotta say about that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you insist on being the last person to speak? I mean, why don't you just, you know, when, when we open the floor to public comment, just raise your hand.
Why, why, Mr. Dike?
I'm just curious, why you wanna be the last person to speak?
Uh, I don't know.
So, for now, I'm.
I come to everyone, everybody else, in case.
As, as respect to us, just raise your hand. If you wanna speak, speak, come on.
But they, they may have, I already said.
You're not gonna be the last person to speak today, come on, Barry. Come on down, Barry, come on down, Barry.
Barry's the last.
Barry's got something important to speak about.
All right.
Really polite.
Barry Bender, the historic street that runs off of Route Nine down at the south end of town. Um, you know what, I, I'm keeping an open mind as far as the whale thing goes, because there's a lot of information that you really, really need to dig in, but I heard something that was upsetting. Um, I heard from someone at Secondhand, uh, that the people at the Mammal Stranding Center are saying there's nothing wrong with the windmills, and they've gotten threatening calls, which is sickening as far as I'm concerned.
That's disgusting.
This is, this is completely out of control.
It has.
I mean, in this, in this country, you're allowed to have opinions that don't go with the flow. And right now, that will get you in trouble.
It seems.
That's what's wrong, it's dead wrong.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't want her to be the last one.
Thank you, Barry, I appreciate it. And when's the cancer run, the walk?
August twelfth through thirteenth.
There you go.
Okay, and the, the Survivor Lunch starts at noon that day. We need help on the committee, so if there's anybody listening that wants to be involved with Relay for Life, we could use the help.
And the website is?
Uh, it's a Facebook page, Relay for Life Berkeley slash.
Okay, so you can get in touch with us for that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Anybody, any other comments from the public?
Seeing non-motion to close the, are you coming?
Oh, you're gonna come down, okay. So, would you like to sit down and talk? We can take that mic.
No, it's okay.
Okay?
Former mayor of Franklin Township in Somerset County.
And your first name is, sir?
Richard.
Richard, thank you very much.
And a retired policeman.
Very good, thank you for your service.
Except, Murphy has cut our pensions. We get no increases under the state program.
Cost of living allowance.
Okay.
And that has been now for twelve years. So, I'm asking the council if they can help us in that matter.
Well, I do believe your state PBA is fighting to get some kind of cost of living allowance back into your pensions. If you reach out to the retirees, PBA six hundred, I think they could give you an update as to what they're trying to do to fight for your rights to get the cost of living allowance back into your pensions. My husband is a retired police officer as well, and he's lost that also, and he does stay pretty much in touch with a lot of the retirees, and there is information to be had for you to see what's going on.
Yeah, because we haven't had an increase in, I think it's twelve years.
You're a hundred percent correct.
So, it's on my end statement for taxes, that I got this increase.
Right.
But you never get the increase.
No, there's, yeah, there's, there's no increase anymore. And it used, it used to be along with inflation, kind of just like Social Security gives you increases, the same thing happened with the pensions, and they stopped that a number of years ago.
I would only make one suggestion.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about resolutions and ordinances. After each one, if you had just a little bit of a statement, what it's for.
I did, I did, I do that all the time.
Yeah, you do it here.
Are you talking on the agenda?
I'm talking about on paper.
That would be a long agenda.
And if it's possible, if you could just like, for example, when you talk about Ordinance